What's he, what's he doing?
John.
He's got one.
But he don't, right?
He had to build one.
He helped me.
He helped me with the hand now.
So now I'm figuring out the happy.
Yeah.
No, Jerry.
Toby, we don't have a, we don't have Tricia.
Toby, let him go.
He's trying to get her.
Toby.
All right.
Go get her neck out of there.
Everything's all right.
Hundred seventy thousand?
Because he left because he was.
Well, you're on her.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Brady.
That's what I'm doing.
I know it can't be done with your neck.
Oh.
Oh, it's okay. It doesn't bother me at all.
In the trailer?
Uh.
Hi, we're ready. Okay, we got three. We ready to start.
I just want to get Tricia.
Back in.
I don't think so.
Discuss the budget this time. Let's go with Fairground.
Okay.
Great. How's it going?
It's going well. Everything's rolling pretty good. Cruising coast is looking good coming up this year. Getting real close, so people starting to call in. And we had a couple horse shows and dressage shows and quarter horse shows, so we're rolling.
How are you doing on your, um, and I'm just wearing a different hat, but on the cruise, you actually make a little money last year off the RV?
We made, uh.
I made about ten thousand.
It was. It was nine something.
I don't think you might have.
It was right at nine something.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so we brought in a little over nine thousand dollars.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, it's close.
It's getting, we're getting close to that ten thousand.
That's a good, yes.
Greg, is there any significant differences in your budget requests? I know there might be additional, uh, retirement insurance or something like that, but anything else?
No, sir, nothing, nothing at all. Um, we just, um, looking against some, just more equipment. That's it. Just getting some more equipment, some, um.
Do you have it in this budget?
Yes, sir, some lawn mowers.
What are you asking for?
I believe it was a three.
Two trailers, a truck.
Two trucks, yes.
Two long ones.
It was two, two trucks.
That's heavy equipment.
But also, Mr. Ladner, uh.
You didn't give us a list of what you're going to spend on.
I said, keep a copy of my stuff.
Never mind. Last page. That's very good stuff.
So Greg, you're actually asking for a hundred seventy thousand less.
And that's, and that's because in the budget before, we had the building that we were looking at getting for the office, but we've been working out of the trailer at, uh, John, John Clark Road, and it's been working fine. Uh, and I, I would think that if we can put it off for maybe a year or two, then maybe revisit the, uh, the project a little bit later on when we kind of get. It'll probably, yes, and it'll probably be cheaper.
That's good, but you never know about a year or two later what this question is going to be. I'm not for that.
Yeah, well, with, with COVID, I'm thinking it can't get any higher than this, but who knows? I don't know. But I'm okay with revisiting the project.
It hasn't, it hasn't caused too much of a problem.
No, ma'am, not at all. Not at all.
And you're gonna have three lawn mowers, three trucks?
That's, that's what.
So did you put in, what kind of trucks? Cause that's only twenty five thousand. Three trucks and then it cost them more than that.
Well, are we able to get used trucks or no?
If you did that.
You can find them.
Make up these.
That's what I was going off of, if we can get used trucks, we don't need brand new trucks for Fairgrounds.
Can you just write in that area?
We're right in that area, and then we only go to Mississippi City Cemetery, and we go to family cemeteries.
And you say trucks, what kind of trucks?
Just an F-150. Nothing, nothing two B.
They're just gonna, I guess, using it around the facilities.
Using it around the facility and pulling, um, pulling some, uh, lawn mowers, that's it. We don't pull big, big equipment or anything like that. We just pull a couple of, uh, lawn mowers, that's it, to get to the cemeteries. That's all we needed for, so just a few F-150s would be fine.
Hey, Greg, no worries.
You're good.
Maybe you use it, yeah.
But you don't, you don't, uh.
Mike can use it. Mike, Mike can use it.
Sir.
The building. What were we gonna use it for? Storage in office?
Stores and office space, yes, sir. Mainly office space, that's what it was going to be used for.
If we have some trucks, since you don't have to have some for the, they've got to go on the road. Just add some trucks from other parts and maybe it'd be for.
Exactly. I would love that. Matter of fact, I, I called Timmy, but he said he didn't have any at the time. But I, that's, that's always my first go-to, is go to the road department.
I, I would be inclined, and I don't, it, it could. With seven, hundred and seventy thousand dollars left, and that includes the truck that you requested in here? Even, I, I, I don't know if I'd buy secondhand trucks. I'd maybe rather than buy three, cause you're not gonna get three trucks for twenty five thousand. Buy one or two and start.
Okay.
I mean, that's just my opinion. You buy, you're buying secondhand stuff, three years down the road, you're gonna have to buy another.
Yeah.
So I don't know if, if, uh, you know, like, I think, Greg, I'd look at buying. Of course, I know what you're saying, I can get three used trucks.
Yes, sir.
I can get three new. But that's just something I might want to think about, I might be getting two.
I don't disagree with you at all. I don't disagree with you at all.
Two new ones.
I'll be fine with that.
Two new or used?
You might can get those little, the ones with the tacks, which is the smaller trucks.
That's all we need.
Yeah, can you get a smaller truck?
Yes, sir. Matter of fact, I, I just looked at some single cab trucks, um, that can just pull a lawnmower, cause that's all we need to get to the cemeteries with.
Yeah, that's part of, I mean, we'll look at that, cause that's a part of that part of, you know.
Exactly.
Just something to think about.
Yes, sir. Other than that, just a couple lawn mowers, cause the last lawn mowers we bought were seven years ago, and they have a lot of hours on them. So they're, they're starting to, starting to break down.
When there's something, you got the tractor and the other, you got everything?
Yes.
Something dark and, okay.
Yeah, we, we didn't get two tractors this year. We're, those are fine, working good.
One, uh, one time, issue with P A system or something.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that. The P A system is completely outdated. If there's a missing child, lost child, there's not a system for the entire, it's completely antiquated. But did you put that, any part of that?
Yes, I didn't put that in here, um, but that, that price, I did get quotes for it. Um, that price was right at a hundred and ten thousand to do the entire facility, and I do have two quotes with that. I can turn that in, as soon as I leave here, I can get it right over to you all. Uh, but I didn't put that in this budget at all.
It's, uh, it's over seventy five thousand, so it would have to be, you have to do our house county resource. I mean, I'm sorry, I haven't time to give it to you.
You said how much you think?
It, it was roughly right around one ten.
Yeah.
Unless, unless we can do it in phases as well, we can probably do, work it out in phases if we wanted to do it that way.
Split in launches.
Well, what, what, hey, he's asking for a hundred and seventy thousand less than this previous year, so this might be.
Good, I'm with you.
Some.
Okay. Mr. Brady, cause he's not including the office, that was two hundred thousand, the office building, since he said they were good.
Spending money on that.
So they use that money for the year.
I would like to use that for that, uh, P A system.
I already had the two quotes.
If you got any information, you have to, you still have to, cause it's seventy five thousand. So we have to put it on the next, maybe on the fourteenth.
We can amend this budget once we have that, if it takes longer.
Okay, we'll just put on the agenda for the fourteenth to authorize advertising.
Yeah.
Cause it takes a little process, it takes a few months for you to do it.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Cause you've been needing that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Also, um, in line item nine twenty-two at the, uh, dog park, which the, the dog park is used every single day out there, Fairgrounds.
Dogs enjoy it?
Oh, they really love it.
They tell them, have they written you a letter?
They really love it.
I wonder how he knows that he's been talking to them.
One, one thing, uh, one thing that the people have not enjoyed is we don't have any shade out there in the small area. Um, the company, kneecakes, I forgot, Brent kneecakes. Brent kneecakes did our pole barns, and, uh, he gave me a price on, uh, just putting like a little small twenty by twenty, um, covering at the dog park. And we actually have money in our nine twenty-two line item. It's a capital account, not sure if we can use it or not, but that will cover the cost. I think it was to do that covering as well as a, uh, forty by forty covering in between these two competition arenas. And I want to show you where the location is.
How about some trees for the dogs? They like trees, they like, they like to fire hydrate.
And he has two, huh?
Yes. They fire hydrate them.
What you're, what you're looking at right there, that's the location right in between our two back arenas, th- those are the two competition arenas. What I have circled there is a, uh, it's a tent that we put up every single year for the winter classic, for, uh, our dressage shows that we have out there, as well as, um, some of our other hunter jumper shows that always use a back arenas. And they don't have any shade either. What we normally have to do is put up and down forty by forty tent. I would love to just put a, a, uh, yeah, just go ahead and put a covering there that's permanent, a permanent structure there. The cost of that, plus the covering for the dog park, um, covering would be right at about twenty thousand dollars. And we actually have the money in this budget this year to go ahead and take care of that. If I go ahead.
The dog park one?
Yes, the dog park one and this one.
And that one?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Did I give you a copy? Have to give you this?
No.
That's the location of the forty by forty, uh, permanent structure that we can put up. And for that one, and a twenty by twenty covering for the dog park would be right at about twenty thousand dollars. And I can get two quotes on that.
If he's ordering, if he's gonna do it now, beyond this year's, so it won't need to stay in this one. If we go ahead and order it now?
Cause I was thinking, we can go ahead and order it now, I can get the order in.
Take that out of your budget.
Yes, ma'am. I can get it ordered tomorrow.
But now you do have, does he need two quotes, something twenty days?
Thanks, no?
Yes, yes, yeah, I'm sorry, over five, yeah.
No, I, I have the two quotes tomorrow.
And the other thing?
And y'all got the?
Need to be it.
Yes, that's the, um, finances, you need to be it, yes.
Um, and y'all got the fans installed and everything now?
They're good to go, working well. Other than that, that's it for me.
Thanks, good.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you all.
Hi, Greg.
Could you tell whoever's out there for parks and rags, if they want to come in, thank you.
How do you do? Do you, you need to make sure who's present, breaking down who's present? Okay. Gang's all here. You just say after this, this, at whatever one, one minute. Can't jump.
Park and rec, that, that's him, too. No.
Park and rec is.
His body, yeah, there he is.
Greg, Mr. Quick?
Hi, you could have nothing else for this?
Hello, how are you?
All right.
How's third, you doing?
Doing all right.
Liz, Liz, the brownies were good.
I'm glad you're here. Thank you just for you.
So you went up thirty, about thirty thousand on maintenance service?
Um, yes. But overall, the budget went up thirty eight thousand dollars total from last year, which is basically asking to add another employee.
That's what that increase is for, to add another employee?
Yeah, it goes, it goes up like thirty eight thousand and some change, which is the cost with insurance and benefits for another employee. I als, the changes that I asked for in there is I have three employees that I asked to do equalization of pay on.
Okay.
Um, and then also, I'm asking for a skid steer this year.
You believe that?
And you got all that in?
Yes, sir.
Within the?
Yes, sir.
Last year's budget except thirty eight thousand.
Yes, sir.
But what? On the equalization, what is it, they just?
They're making fifteen, twenty-four an hour, and, you know, some of these guys are kind of what I call running my crews. You know, they're, they're my better dependable employees, and I like to bring them up to the seventeen forty-seven that everybody else is at.
And on six forty-one, building repairs, you went down.
Yep, we didn't spend as much this year.
Okay.
Um, vehicles, one or two?
One. Yeah, I went down on vehicles because I was asking for the skid steer.
Yeah.
And I'm, I have, uh, one more infill machine in there, too, because last year y'all bought me two and said next year ask for one, so I have that other one in there. And, and so I only did one, which I talked to Pam about this, but I only did one vehicle because I'm, I'm adding two twenty-foot trailers. Um, that way I could put three pieces of equipment on a twenty-foot trailer, since it's so hard to get vehicles right now. Um, yeah, so that's, that's why I went to that. It's, it's easy to get one fifties, but we have to have at least a two fifty to pull, pull.
That's good steer. Do you, do you have, how much is a good steer?
Uh, sixty.
Sixty, sixty six.
I figured about sixty thousand.
Mm-hmm. Now, that, the, the same one from, from Bobcat is eighty-some thousand, so.
But what is the handy?
But we can't unload, we can't unload the vehicles at the shop, and we can't use the forklift because we have a gravel parking lot. And so we have to rely on the District Five to not have something going on that day to be able to unload a truck.
So you unload trucks with good, uh?
Yes, sir.
Good steers?
Yes, sir.
Piece of, uh?
Yep.
Adapted, uh?
Yeah, force.
Part something.
Yep. And they're, and they're good to us, District Five was good to us about it, so.
What is a recreation program subsidy? You went down.
Uh, that's where we buy like bases, um, bags, um, you know, home plates, balls, soccer goals, you know, things like that.
Helmets.
Helmets.
It does, yeah, that.
Helmet, no. We gotta have that conversation, though.
Yeah. How'd it go?
Oh, it, it went fine. I mean, you know, they, they, they kind of understood.
What they gonna do?
Well, they, they're just gonna try to bump it to next year, see if we can go ahead and buy something now, and then maybe buy something again in the future, but not that much.
Memorial Hospital did a grant two years ago and gave all of our horseback riders free helmets. So if you want to call whoever's, maybe Andrew Zay and ask about that again, cause they do a lot about, uh, preventing brain trauma. Memorial Hospital, preventing brain trauma, the neurologists all got together, and so we, I forget how many, but we gave out about a hundred helmets maybe to, uh, the equestrian.
Okay. Got it.
I can find the video on my Facebook, cause they did something about it, maybe two years ago.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
Al, also, um, I know it said, um, someone called me and said, that, in a meeting a while ago, we don't make sixty five thousand, we make sixty-three.
I did say that.
Uh, oh, you did?
I did say, I remember that.
Yeah, one of the other directors called me, so I said, well.
A lot of the directors.
Okay.
There are some.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Janet Mayo, please, if she's not there, she didn't come up.
Janet Mayo. Same years. It's probably been a while.
We're going to her. No, that's. Would you like for me to call and see if she's on the line?
I'm, I'm getting her up, please.
Okay.
Oh, there she is.
There she is.
Oh, girl.
Hello.
Her man.
Excuse me, does somebody want to go ahead and pop up all the other ones? Like Jane Fayer now, or, or how does schedule?
Yeah.
And then disability connection, whoever that is.
I don't actually do that.
If we don't, I don't have a contact for the health department, um, cause they're coming from Habsburg, they're coming from Habsburg.
I'm Jesus.
So.
And tax collector, if they're available.
We can move, I was gonna say, we can move them, everybody else.
Pineville probably can't, health department probably can't.
They're in the health department, or probably can be here.
Who would be disability connection?
That is, um, it's from Matt.
I can't remember.
Jane, Jane, Jane.
Why, why are they all not good?
Yeah, she, she asked him, she asked him for additional, it's advertising.
Well, then she doesn't need to be in this, why?
She's come from all, Matt.
But that's advertising county resources.
That's not a budget issue.
She's not a department address.
No, you're, you're all right. No, she's not.
Okay.
But we've always given her advertising.
Well, then that's.
But how is she different from anyone else?
Because, because it has, if you're doing something like that.
Who's giving her that advertising, who's recommending that, uh, advertising?
We've always used.
I guess she can't come out, I don't think that can come out of mine. You know what I mean? Then we don't need to be talking about budgets.
We can call, cause she's just right here.
Yeah.
She's just right here in Baloxia.
Okay, so we'll cancel disability connection, get mosquito control sooner, get the tax collector sooner, and then do Pineville in the shed.
What about the health?
We can't, they're coming from Habsburg. Oh.
Okay, hello, Ms. Janet, how are you?
How are you? Hello. Hi, how are you all? We have Delanda, she's my assistant, I have her name, R S fifteen, Gerald, what S E P.
This one you're gonna be first, or the back third?
All right, so you just start with what's on the top?
Now, you ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I see, calculate this right on which one is this, if I could, P, you have two corrective budgets, what, what is it?
Yeah, it's right here. It says corrected.
It says corrected budget?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, okay, okay. We, I submitted, um, a budget to this plan, and then I realized we had to make an adjustment.
Okay.
So that corrected, we made sure that we didn't get that big stuff, so when it says this four, five, two, and four, that's.
These are two different, like, two different budgets here, what?
They, they are. It was council on aging, and then there's also senior resources. Four, five, two is the council on aging.
Sir. On that first. About the third page.
Oh, right here. It's top number, home on four. So that's the, the, oh, oh, one, four, five, two is the council on aging.
This is her.
That's, that's hers, and this is hers. She's got several.
I got it.
So the council on aging, we want a hundred and seven thousand dollars more. I'll see in there.
That's what I.
Number four, five, two.
I'm sorry, but you sound. Yeah, that's, um, with the salaries, we had to do some, um, salary adjustments, we have some. We did hire, uh, another outreach person, um, this year. I was just saying, I didn't need it, you are. We are.
So Janet, on that particular point, it says salary equalization for directors, who's that? And C D L drivers.
Okay, the C D L drivers, um, what we're trying to do, they are very low paid, and they've been here for a long time. They don't only drive, they do janitorial, so we were trying to get their, um, budget up, or their, um, payment up a little bit where they could.
Where, where, no, where are you at? I'm, I'm, four, five, two. This here, look, what's the number? Yeah, give me the number, babe, that's it.
Four, five, two.
I was talking about this. She's going five, thirteen, to nine, sixty-two.
Maintenance service and employees, okay. What are they making out of that?
Okay, um, they're making, um, well, Lamar Curtis is making fourteen thirty-five, where Chris.
What's that?
They are the, um, custodian plus bus driver. Yeah. So they were just hired for bus driver, but then they took on the custodian. So we wanted to kind of, uh, close the gap, we've got quite a bit of difference between the two of them, so we wanted to move them both up to fifteen dollars an hour. Um, we also, and they have to purchase their own C D L. I, I wanted to see if we could do the C D Ls ourself.
I don't know about that.
But I didn't, yeah.
People are paying for their own.
Yeah, so, um, so I didn't put that in there, but they do have to pay for their own C D L license, which is a little bit expensive. So I was just trying to get them moved up to like fifty dollars an hour.
And how much was it before?
Um, before it was, Chris Battle was thirteen thirty-nine, and moving him up to fifty.
Sounds pretty good at that, what percentage increase did that, I can't do that, I got off of my head, this here is what percentage increase?
I had a percent in the box. That's a twelve percent increase.
All right.
Twelve percent. Don't ask me to add in my head, I have to.
My, I don't mind giving these folks a pay raise, I agree, but that's very low. But keep in mind that if we give across the board percentage pay raise to all our employees, that doesn't mean on top of this.
Okay, understand.
If, if board approves the pay raises down.
Yes, sir. Okay.
And then you've got V.
Well, I also was going to try to move LaBouie up, because she's the only one that has a big gap in her pay. Um, she's building her center up now that she's got them up to forty-five, fifty a day, where before.
Clients, you mean?
Pardon me?
Clients?
Yes, clients, I'm sorry.
That's great.
Um, so that's a big increase from last year, when she may have had twenty at the most. So I, that is a great, she's doing an excellent job, so I felt.
The only problem is, when I came in, our senior center at Socha, uh, excuse me, at Lyman had eight clients, now we have waiting lists, because we've done so many innovative business things. So Al Jones, do you know what I'm saying? Al, we can't go by the amount of clients, but I agree with you, they all do a great job.
Well, and that's the only thing.
Trying to give it some sort of, it's not equal, but some sort of close to equal.
Yeah, no, no, I agree.
And that's why I don't, I didn't put any of the others in there, because they're already making up.
Yeah.
At that amount, so I'm just trying to get her closer, closing the gap.
It's still. No, we agree, I'm just pointing out, it doesn't count how many clients you have.
Yeah, well.
No, well, yeah. That's not a scam to you. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
But you also want five vehicles?
I do, but I won't tell you why. We've got two that transports meals, and their vehicles, they may be lucky if they make it there with the meal. Um, Lyman, their air conditioning went out, they can't deliver meals with no air. Um, we've got Wool Market, that they've had an old van, and he was driving a Socha in the back when it fell out, or, you know, so. So this is what, and I'm trying to get them like an Explorer, something that's big enough, not top of the line, but something big enough that is large enough, they can carry these large heating, uh, yeah. So that, that's why I'm looking at trying to get them a nicer vehicle, and then get the smaller vehicles, um, LaBouie doesn't have a vehicle, the one she has, she breaks down, it rains inside, all of them are very, very old. We have Outreach, we have, um, Francis Fredericks, that all need, and we can get small vehicles for those, just something they can, um, do their shopping in, or any running that they have. When you say shopping, that's when they're going to get the crafts? The crafts, yes, when they, they have to go pick up their supplies, and then that, from time to time, they have to go pick things up from the other centers, so. So, you never know when they're gonna need a, a good vehicle, and I, you know, I hate to see them break down in, in some of these neighborhoods.
Oh, Ms. Tricia, I might be speaking out of school, but whatever happened to the mental health bands?
Well, there are issues that tied to.
What happened with the mental health things?
Yeah, there was some.
I couldn't hear what you.
I'm sorry, there was some extra bands at the mental health, people have.
Well, we're Gulf Coast Mental Health, when Gulf Coast Mental Health was winding down, did have some, some extra bands. We're in the process of getting those titles converted, we went to the tax assessor, we thought they were titled at Gulf Coast Mental Health, two of them are actually titled in the Mississippi Department of Mental Health, so, so it's ongoing, and we're gonna get two bands there. And, and it was my understanding when we asked all of them, that they were both going to the senior sergeant.
That's what I thought.
And, and, no, no, we, we ain't got the titles.
So, those, those bands would be able to be used for the transport of meals, or for any other thing?
I don't, I don't know that they would actually work for, unless you remove some of those seats, but remember, they have those benches that go all the way, but they, they're really, they, they were for people. I guess you could talk about, I don't know. Anyway, uh, we don't have title to deliver to the county yet, but they do.
So, you're looking at more like issue B three.
Well, something that they could use, and not, and, and use when they're not transporting their meals, they also can use this for picking supplies up and other things. And we also put a grant in, haven't heard from a grant, for a, um, van or a bus, it's probably gonna be more like a, a van. But we're hoping to hear from that.
Well, if the rate were going with three ten thirteen, you'll probably get your grant before it expires.
The time is a year, okay?
Yeah. It's, it's been impossible to shut that place down.
Or anything else on this one? Want to go to the next one?
What would be?
What was her?
What did we say, uh, need cases, uh, increased for, the, the buoy?
Um, we moved her up, she is making, it was, let me see, I think, I got it right. Which, increasing her to seventeen seventy-five, I think that's what the other.
It was, um, no, it was thirteen ninety, it's going sixteen.
I'm sorry.
Sixteen eighty.
But the other center directors are making about that.
They, they make, I'm not gonna make a seventeen seventy-five, it's more.
Some of them making seventeen seventy-five, but then we've got a couple that are making like eighteen something. So, we still can't completely close that gap, but we can bring it a little bit closer.
Do it over several years.
Yes, so that's why I'm trying.
Yeah, because they've got the same title and the same job.
They do.
They should be making pretty much.
And those, and those, um, the ones that are making a little more, is because they have two, two, two centers, or two, you know, different programs, or something, there's a reason why, they don't.
Um, and we also would like to move, um, right now, we have Wool Market and Socia under the same director. We would like to move, take the director, the person there now, and make her the director, because they built up so, until they need their own director there.
Which one?
Uh, Socia.
Socia.
Yes, we shared that, we had one director, and then we had, uh, they bring meals and all that stuff.
But it's harder to, uh, not the director.
Yes, sir.
But now that's when the amount of clients does matter, it's when it is relevant.
Yeah.
So, how small is Socia, isn't Socia and Wool Market put together about the same size as a Lyman or a LaBouie, and I could be wrong?
Uh, we, Socia has about fifty to fifty-five.
Clients, okay.
Yes.
That's bigger than I thought, a lot of them call me from there when you visit there, so.
Yeah, yeah, they, they are growing, and, and, and several of them has outgrown their center, so, and, which is a good thing, we, we like that problem.
Yes. Okay.
You wouldn't actually probably.
No, we have a person, um, we would just like to maybe.
Pickleball.
Do they have pickleball at those?
Uh, no, sir, I wish we had room for them. Because that is a big thing.
You will soon have a pickleball outside, so, not inside. It's about to be done.
I don't think they care, really.
Please don't let any of those people go outside in this weather.
Oh, I'm not, well, that's, it's, it's, you know, hit at your own risk.
Hit at your own risk.
Yeah.
Well, I have a good example, I have a bruise from pickleball the other night. I hit myself with the paddle.
It's amazing to me how, that's.
It's really gone, and it's all my age and older, can you believe that?
It's all, it's all people older than me.
That's right. Well, it is, one is ninety-six out there playing.
We have a hundred-year-old lady at, uh, Lyman.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How old is that?
A hundred, we had a birthday party four, two weeks ago, she just turned a hundred.
She doesn't still play, she's playing with, uh, pickleball?
But she'll do bingo.
Dominos, it might be a crash.
That's wonderful, though, that.
It is, yeah.
Long, you chasing cows, you don't have time.
I don't have time for pickleball, I guarantee.
You get enough exercise.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Is R S V P separate, or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Are you ready for R S V P?
Are you done, Dan?
Unless you have more questions.
Anybody?
What numbers are these?
Where are the next digits?
Where are we?
Four five eight.
Four five eight.
So, you want a hundred fifty-two dollars more, that, that's a lot.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, what was that?
That's what you're asking, about a hundred fifty-two dollars more.
Hundred fifty-two dollars more?
That's, that's the, that's the county portion, that's pretty much a fully federal funded program, except the match. Except for the match.
In the match, all it looks different, we had, uh, the cost of increase, cost of living rates last year, were applied to the, um, federal budget, so it's just kinda, it's been moved over this year, so that the numbers look a little different, so we adjusted, we had capacity, but, um, that's really it. This is changed.
Is this council of eight on that?
Yes, sir, that's, uh, that's a few lines down under R S V P, it's four five eight. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the match, really good.
Yes. Well, five eight, this is the.
Well, there is a lot of programs under senior services.
This is the four five eight, that's the county match on the federal program.
Okay.
Couple.
So, that's a state amount, the match.
So, the grant is eighty-eight thousand four hundred and two.
No, the grant is sixty-nine thousand and thirty-one dollars.
That's how, and, but we pay eighty-eight thousand as match?
Yes.
So, it's more.
It, it's not, it's not, it, yeah, it's, it's, it's a three-year grant award period, and then each year, you get about the same amount each year. Sometimes they will give a augmentation.
We had one a couple years ago.
But the augmentation's only like five or fifteen thousand, some they gave in COVID, they was a little like.
Yeah, just depends on the funds, the whole different things.
So, the federal, almost paying sixty-nine, we're paying eighty-nine.
Most of them volunteers.
That's the ten-year senior volunteer program.
Yes, there are my reimbursement, or insurances, and then.
How many volunteers do you get?
How many volunteers? We're running about two hundred right now.
That's amazing.
Is that right?
That's why when you were talking earlier about older adults doing things, we have a ninety-three-year-old that teaches water aerobics, so, it's awesome. You can keep on keeping on, it's awesome.
That gives me hope.
Yes, so when you retire, you can join the retired senior volunteer program and.
Now, that's different than the senior companion.
It is different than the senior companion program, they have a separate budget.
Now, what is a senior companion? What is a senior, what's the difference?
Oh, okay, we have, uh, we're a smaller number of volunteers, same American War, uh, federal grant, and, um, they receive a stipend for volunteering, which they just increased from the three dollars to four dollars an hour. And they're allowed to do so many hours in the community, and it goes towards the lower income, uh, volunteers, so it's putting money into the community from the grant for them, to supplement their, their subsidies and stuff.
So, this forty-two thousand is really, it went from forty-one to forty-two?
Just increases, I guess, the, yes, well, yeah, the stipend and, um, cost of living.
So, we're paying in, what, the forty-two five, and we're getting out about two hundred and sixty-one, so that's a figure.
That's a deal.
That's like eighty.
Uh, less than that.
Less than that.
But we're just thinking about sure, too, that we're adhering to the grant compliance requirements on the match, because I know that this year, we had to cut it off, because we were spending more on the federal side, the county match side, so.
Any other questions?
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My dad did stuff to that, I wanted to be chief partner, I didn't know, I don't know that he's still doing it, but Janine had told me a year, a couple of years ago.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Life holds or something, yes, something. Of course, he's eighty-five, he don't make his life a lottery.
Man of frozen.
Yes.
Yeah, they make it up, thank you.
They're all coming in early. I did get my son. I gotta share.
Eh?
Leah's holding already.
What?
We already did everything, John.
I'm always behind, I'm scared.
No, um, Jean was on his way when I called him, so he just.
And Sharon's on her way, come up for. See, maybe I'll just do it. We don't, we don't have any meetings tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mine is boring, man.
Yes. We never all come back.
So, at the Monday meeting, night and day, Thursday.
I didn't even have a hearing.
Brown's.
Don't, don't get gout-eating that stuff.
I, I watch what I eat, so.
I watch it too.
Say, President.
Believe it or not, I walked over to the table, I was doing some work on my table, felt just fine, stood up, and I had.
And you had gout?
Just that quick. Yes, unbelievable.
What brings it on?
Pain, sure.
Because you don't eat shrimp.
It's the uric acid in your body, so I guess, it usually is an overnight affair, you go to bed, you try and get up in the morning.
There may be some in the refrigerator, what do you need? Spray, I don't know if they break all the.
I got orders in the fridge.
We need, we need a spray.
Yeah, there's one in there. I've been taking a break, I need to turn it off, if you want, just leave it on.
Are you down alone?
Yeah, I'm home.
Turn it off, because there's nobody, they're just watching Mr. Mr. Kennedy. She said, I need to turn it off, I said, yeah, turn it off, and nobody.